It's your own bank teller's cubicle, yes?
I know, we've already, Paul already broke his.
It may have been because I thought you could grab it here and do that and the legs came off. I was basically gonna chuck it anyway.
Scattered.
Polymers. Yeah.
They are always on.
Talking.
Press the button to mute.
No. Yes. I grabbed it and did that and the legs came off and I had to put it back and it was embarrassing. The way they're on unless you're pushing the button to stop them. I agree.
And they're like all awkward for me.
So are ours, by the way. They're always on unless you mute it. It wouldn't, that part wouldn't change.
No.
I don't like it on. It's very like, I don't like it.
It makes sense.
Actually, it looks like Holly's got a nice, really fancy gold chain. Because you can't see.
She does.
Black on black, you can't see the microphone. Just to give you.
They did something special for her.
You are, okay. Thank you. I don't have anyone lined up for the flags.
Is Eric here?
Yes, he is zooming.
Zooming.
Oh, he's zooming. No, there's nothing normal about it.
Do my little spiel here.
Do I?
Good evening. We will be conducting tonight's meeting in person in the council chambers with limited seating to encourage social distancing. An overflow area on the first floor conference room is available should seats fill up. And the meeting will also be in a virtual setting using Zoom for staff and public. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting tonight on Wave Channel 18 and online through the city's website as noted on the agenda. If you would like to participate in live public comment via Zoom, please refer to the agenda for instructions. Councilmember Andriata will be giving the invocation tonight and the mayor will begin the meeting immediately afterwards.
All right, thank you Glenn. Let's pray. Lord, we just thank you for this evening. We thank you for the change in the weather and we ask God that you be with our firefighters as they finish fighting these fires that are remaining from the summer. Protect them and protect our land. God, pray that you bless our city. That you will keep our residents safe and well. And I ask, Lord, that you be with us in this meeting tonight. Help us to govern wisely. Help us to be quick to listen and slow to speak and just give us to sermon. And we, we ask for your grace and your mercy in all we do. In Jesus' name, amen.
All right, I have six o'clock exactly by my watch, so I'll call the meeting to order. Ms. Hillen, can I get a roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Andriata.
I'm here.
Councilmember Joyner.
Here.
Councilmember Carl Skent.
Right.
Councilmember Lawrenceon.
Here.
And Mayor Silhaj.
Here. All right, report from closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff received direction, but there is no reportable action.
And Ms. Moncock will also be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
Stand and salute or place your hand over your heart and recite with you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, it's very echoey tonight. You guys sound really echoey. All right, um, do we have any agenda modifications? None, you have none. All right. And we will move along to item six, presentation. The Western Placer Waste Management Authority Renewable Placer Waste Action Plan update and Eric Odo, who is the WP, WMA Program Manager, will be giving the presentation for us, I believe by Zoom, correct? Yes, okay.
That is correct. Yes, so good evening, Mayor Silhaj. Thank you, members of the City Council. Thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate the ability to present to the council this evening. As I mentioned.
You hold on for one minute, we're having a.
During you. I'm sorry. There you go.
It was on us, there you go.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Silhaj, members of the City Council. I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Eric Otto. I'm the Program Manager with the Western Placer Waste Management Authority. And as noted, tonight I'm going to give you a brief presentation on the authority's waste action plan and how we're working to address the needs of the region in the long term. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And if you can just let me know that you're able to see the presentation and then I'll continue.
Yes.
Great. So I want to just give a little bit of a background about the authority. The authority was formed in the late seventies between the cities of Lincoln, Rockland, Roseville, and the county of Placer to handle solid waste needs on a regional basis. And over time, the authority's operation has continued to evolve to include the Materials Recovery Facility, or MRF, in a composting operation, and those are intended to assist the member agencies in meeting and complying with state cycling mandates. So this regional approach has worked really well over the last forty years and has enabled the member agencies to meet and exceed the state's solid waste mandates while maintaining stable, consistent rate structure. But unfortunately, things change. And so we have a number of challenges that are in front of us these days and, and I want to talk briefly about them. And these challenges that have emerged are going to have an impact on the solid waste industry generally and Placer County specifically. First of all, in response to climate change concerns, the state has established increasingly strict organic material diversion mandates targeting not only green waste and yard waste, but also food, lumber, textiles, paper, any kind of organic material. And the purpose behind that is that as organic materials are landfill, they have the potential to generate methane, which is a very potent greenhouse gas. So the state has established mandates to limit the amount of organic materials that can be landfilled. At the same time that we're required to divert more materials from landfilling, global recycling markets are experiencing significant shifts that are impacting the economics of recycling. And namely, China has historically been the big buyer worldwide of recyclable products and has, over the last couple of years, reduced the amount that they're willing to purchase, which then puts an economic strain on all of us recyclers here domestically. Finally, estimates of regional population growth suggested over the next thirty years, the population in our area and the county can nearly double. And with that doubling of population, it's going to come a commensurate increase in the amount of solid waste that's generated and needs to be managed. So these issues, along with limited operational capacity here at the site and increasing urbanization of the areas surrounding the authority's facility, really posed some significant challenges to continued operation of the facility and how we're able to provide services to residents and businesses. So those are the challenges that are facing us to many agencies. That would be enough just to want to, you know, fold it in and call it a day. But the authority looks at these challenges as a potential for opportunities. And here, fortunately, several years ago, the authority board took the bold action of initiating its master planning process to evaluate how to use its available resources and modify its facilities. So number one on there is ensuring compliance with regulations and meeting the organics diversion mandates without necessitating a change in collection methods. And that's really important. You know, most of you know that we have what we've coined a one big bin process where residents and businesses aren't required to separate the recyclables from the rest of the race, waste stream, and we'll manage those. One of the, the regulations would suggest that perhaps changing to a separation type system by the residents would make it easier to comply. But I think we all know that that would put additional vehicles on the road and have some other significant impacts. So we're, we're doing our best to make sure that, that jurisdictions don't have to change their collection process. If they choose to, we can accommodate that, but they don't need to. Secondly, we want to make sure that we're providing sufficient capacity to accommodate future growth while also increasing facility diversion rates. We're really interested in pulling more material out from the landfill and putting that into beneficial reuse, but we do need to expand our facility to meet those needs. Doing so is going to provide, you know, ability to maintain local control. And really what that means is that we as municipal entities are controlling our future by operating this facility here. As soon as we find ourselves in a position where we need to rely on a private third party, then our ability to control rates pretty much goes out the door. So it's really critical to maintain and take care of our wastes, ourself, here locally. By doing so, we can also foster and support a circular economy model wherein we can help establish recycling operations here on site where those end users of the materials that we pull from the waste stream, instead of sending those halfway across the world to China, we can send them across the street and help foster development of emerging and, and tested technologies here to use those recyclables and make new products. And at the end of the day, we're going to continue to evaluate and modify our facility operations to be the best neighbor we can. As development encroaches, it puts an ever-increasing burden on the authority to be the best neighbor it can be. Because, you know, I think most people know that, most people think, you know, I don't want to live next to a dump. Well, we don't want to be considered a dump. We don't want to have that moniker. We want to be something that the, the, the residents are proud of. That, you know, this is a really cool thing of, of how you can pull out materials and recycle them and do something good for the environment. So it, it's a pretty big challenge, but the authority's up to it. We've dubbed this our Renewable Placer Waste Action Plan. And it really is, it's a long vision plan on how to develop our properties over the next thirty, fifty-plus years. But we realized that we needed to take that first big step to get this going. And we initiated a procurement process for our MRF and landfill operations. And this would really serve as a bridge to realizing the waste action plan in the future. So late last year, the authority board initiated the, the MRF and landfill procurement process with the MRF being the most significant element of those two procurements. And a key element of the MRF process includes the requirement that the future MRF operator guarantee that they will meet the organics diversion requirements that the state has set forth. That is a real key piece. There's many jurisdictions up and down the state that are not sure how they're going to comply with those organics diversion mandates. We've identified firms that have guaranteed that they can do it and are ready to go day one, once, once they start. Those firms are also required to provide conceptual designs on how they would modify the facility to meet those performance metrics. And so four firms submitted on the initial solicitation and the authority board selected two of those firms to refine their conceptual designs in a form of a design competition to really take their, their costs and their designs and refine them to see how best they can meet our needs and really prove that they're the firm that should be operating the facility in the future. So at this point, the selection of the next MRF and landfill operator, operators will be done probably by the end of this calendar year with them starting as early as July of next year. So as I mentioned, that's really, it's a, this procurement is a bridge to the future. But I wanted to give that snapshot of what the future could look like. And, and on the screen in front of you is a fairly simplified visualization of the authority's land holdings and how we might develop them in the future. So the authority currently holds roughly a thousand acres. About six hundred and fifty of those acres are not currently developed for solid waste uses. They're leased out for agricultural purposes and we've held them in reserve to this point. But with some of the challenges that I mentioned earlier, we believe it's time to start to develop those properties and take the long view approach on how we can manage these waste responsibility into, into the future. So the areas that are denoted in green represent the core operational elements of our facility, namely landfilling, the recovery facilities, composting, and the public drop-off areas. But even after we laid out what we thought was, was necessary and added some contingencies in space, we realized that we had quite a bit of land holdings left over that could be used beneficially for other purposes. And that's where we got this idea of having compatible technologies, public-private partnerships, where we would facilitate the siding of other industries that could come in, be located right next to us and have them take the products that we recover from the waste stream and do something beneficial with them. Realizing that this is a, it's a pretty novel concept still. It's not a, it's not being done many places and that there may be some of these technologies that are in their infancy. We also set aside areas of land for pilot studies or demonstration projects where new and emerging technologies could come, use our resources, use our infrastructure and test out their ideas and see if they're commercially viable. And then finally, we left some space aside for collaborations with universities and other higher institutions of learning to help establish some research and development here on site to further this concept of what can we do to improve our environment, keep materials out of the landfill and use them beneficially and be a good neighbor. So there's a whole lot going on there. There's a lot of ideas that we've envisioned for the site and it can often be difficult to communicate those to folks that are doing this day in and day out. And so what we did is we put together a visualization tool that we have on our website, renewableplaster.com. It's where our draft EIR will be housed as well. And a frame of that visualization tool is shown on the screen right now. And it is an interactive tool that a user can manipulate and scroll around, almost like a Google map type interface. And they can learn more about the project, learn about the components of the project and look at how the facility may look as it develops over time. And then from a number of vantage points, key vantage points, one of them being from the casino to the south of us, to the north of us, to the west of us, and look from different vantage points what the facility may look like. So I'd encourage anybody who's interested to visit the renewableplaster dot site, visit that interactive tool and, and just explore a little bit and learn more about the project. So before I wrap up, I just want to highlight a couple of key dates associated with these processes. As I noted, the procurement process is, is heading to a close, but before that, we've been working on the draft EIR for our waste action plan. We've been working on that now for a couple of years and we're getting ready to release that. So we anticipate releasing the draft for public review and comment at the end of this month. And then as early as November eighteenth, our next, at our November eighteenth authority board meeting is making a recommendation to our board to select the next MRF and landfill operator. Early December, we anticipate having a public meeting for the draft EIR to solicit some feedback and comments from the public. And then, as I mentioned earlier, July next year, we'll start our new operations and start moving towards the future. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I really appreciate the opportunity to, to present and address the council this evening. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. We really appreciated your presentation. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments?
Sure. Eric, could you put back up your, your overhead of your two layout options, please?
Sure, you bet. Okay, there you go.
Thank you. So I guess the first thing I'm going to say is you guys have come a long way since the last meeting that I was attending on the board. It looks as though you are still planning on jumping across sediment and utilizing those properties over there. You've answered a lot of my questions in your presentation. The, I, I was going to be a bit resistant on concept one because that area that we purchased as a buffer originally off to the right on each one is in blue, one is in green. I was concerned about preserving that, but if you're talking about bringing in compatible business types that can help in the recovery of materials, that seems like a logical, common sense way to go forward, which leads me into your discussion of pulling materials out of the landfill that would otherwise cause methane, which leads me to Energy 2001 and their engines. And how long are they going to be able to continue what they're doing as that waste stream changes rapidly?
That, that's a great question because, as I noted, the drive by the state is to reduce the amount of organics going into landfill to reduce the methane that's produced in the landfill. But we have quite a bit of waste already in place and, and what Councilmember Joyner was referring to is that we, the authority leases land to a company right now that takes that methane that we pull out of the landfill and produces electricity to put that back on the grid. And that's Energy 2001. They've been here on site for, oh, close to twenty-five years, I believe, and have, have been a, a solid partner in helping to produce a valuable product from that methane as opposed to just burning it and releasing it to the atmosphere. The authority board recently extended Energy 2001's lease to at least June of 2023. And over the coming months, staff anticipate bringing an item to the board to talk about procurement process for future use of that methane, whether that continues to be generational electricity, generation of vehicle fuels, onsite powering of the facility. But I think we all understand that based on the amount of organics that have already been landfilled, we'll probably be producing significant amount of methane that can be used beneficially for probably the next twenty, fifteen, twenty years at least. So there, there's plenty of opportunities for entities like Energy 2001 to produce valuable products. But, you know, in the long run, that resource will diminish.
Okay, good. Thank you. That does answer that question. I'm, I'm sorry, we've got a little weird echo here that, it throws us off. So you know some of my, my areas of interest with respect to diversions of organics and, and other elements in the waste stream. I'm just wondering, I think you've answered the question that you've got two candidates coming forward who will make proposals as to how they will reduce the waste stream and what goes in, into the landfill. But what I'm curious about, and you've heard me mention them many times, is biodigesters, plasma gasification, other methods of preventing those items from going into the waste stream, but not necessarily being recycled. It sounds like the, the recycling market has collapsed at least internationally and I have not seen a huge market domestically either. So, so moving forward, is there any discussion of those other technologies that can prevent items from going into the waste stream and into the landfill but not necessarily be recovered for other purposes?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that that really speaks to this, the compatible technologies and public-private partnerships that we're envisioning. And I've already had a number of discussions with entities that are extremely interested in, in bringing new technologies to the forefront, which include different thermal processes to produce, whether it be electricity or fuels or biochar for agricultural purposes or industrial purposes. I've also spoken with entities that are interested in taking the plastics and building low-cost housing products with them. So there's a lot of interest out there right now and with developing not only new products and recycling new products, but finding the value in some of these other commodities, whether that be to create fuel, create electricity, create other items other than recycling them and to make brand-new products. So there's absolutely quite a bit of interest and I, I think the authority is committed to finding value in the use of those products, whatever that value may, may be.
All right, thank you, Eric.
I don't have a question. Hi, Eric. It's Holly Andriata. Um, just a comment and just a thank you. I had a conversation with a council member in a nearby jurisdiction, not one of yours. And they were talking to me about all these new organic regulations coming, coming down the pipeline and saying how we're not going to be able to handle it and, you know, start talking about, you know, all this privatizing garbage and stuff like that. And, and, and so that's kind of been in the back of my mind about, you know, are we, how are we doing on that? And so I want you to know that I really, really appreciate the work that you have done and your team and to know that you're already on top of it. And I know you have been this whole, you know, organics thing. And I just want to say thank you. And I'm super grateful that you already have that handled. And I, I feel very confident and that makes me, makes me happy. It feels a lot better because not that I was stressed or anything, but you know, this, this person just like came at me and I was like, well, I think we're good, you know, and yeah. And I know, and you know, I'm the alternate. I'm waiting for, for, for Councilmember Carl Skent to get tired of being on the board so I can, you know, take his spot. But, because it's super interesting. I love it out there. But I just wanted to thank you for that. And it makes me feel very good and very confident in the work that you're doing to know that you already got this handled and I'm really looking forward to seeing how that shakes out. So thank you.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate that feedback. It's, it is appreciated. Sometimes this seems daunting. So it's, it's nice to know that, you know, we as a region, we're actually in a very good spot compared to some of those entities, you know, in other counties around us. So, and that's, it's a huge testament to the authority and its member agencies sticking together, working together to find common solutions and moving the ball forward. So I'm just fortunate to be a part of it.
Thank you, Eric.
Yeah. Over my dead body. I really am enjoying being on the board. If, Eric, if you could also mention, we currently have two or three, at least two innovative agreements with organizations right now that are forward-looking and are going to fit into the manufacturing innovative plan.
Yeah, thank you for that. I mean, the two that, that jumped to mind right away is we have an area that we've, that the authority has set aside for a pilot project with a firm out of the Chico area. And he is taking wood waste and running that through a gasification unit to produce bio oil and bio char. And the bio oil can be refined down to biodiesel and used in any diesel vehicle. The bio char is a really interesting item and it's effectively like charcoal and it can be used as an agricultural additive. It can also be used as a, a carbon base for more, you know, higher industrial uses. So there's a lot of, of opportunities with that product. He's been running the system now for a couple of months. It's under a grant to, with the California Energy Commission. And they're just as excited as we are to, to see the many opportunities with this facility and where we can, you know, find different ways to use our wood waste. And there's a whole lot of it, mostly up in the forest, trying to find some alternative uses for a lot of that dead and dying wood. And then the other one that jumps to mind is that the board recently signed a master services agreement with SacState and the Carlson Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship. And that is really, we, we've had a relationship with William Jessup for R and D work, which has been great. But I think this really moves us to the next level of establishing a partnership with the university and an extension entity to that university to really deepen our bench and help us identify and vet new technologies and find grant opportunities and really put some, some muscle behind these initiatives. So those are the two that stand out to me. It's, it's really exciting. There's a couple others that I've been in some discussions with that aren't quite ready to, to roll out publicly, but I'm hoping that that's going to happen within the next couple of months because there's a lot of interest in what the authority's doing by these outside entities, some local, some in the state, some across the United States. And they're realizing that this is really the right path forward on how we manage solid waste in the future.
One last comment. The website presentation of the two competing designs, it shows a long-term plan, is something that is really worthwhile, really fun to play with because you just hit a dot and it tells you what happens at that spot in, in this particular configuration and so on and so forth. I would recommend anybody with any. So I would recommend anybody with any interest in garbage. I'm sorry, solid waste. Not at the dump, but at the landfill. Would, you should go and look at it. It's on the renewableplaster.com website. Thank you, Eric.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thank you again for having me this evening.
Councilmember Lortzen, did you have any questions or comments?
Comments, you know, that's a, Eric, that's a really interesting operation you have out there. I've been out there and toured it. And it's great that you can find some economic uses for some of that solid waste. I don't want to call it garbage, anyhow.
My only comment is that is one tour I have not taken yet and I would love to. Yeah.
So not wear your best shoes.
Hey, Eric, I do, I noted, quick question, speaking of tours. I know things slowed down because of COVID. Are you guys doing field trips again or is that still on hold?
It's still on hold. You know, I'm hoping we can get those started again soon. You know, we love bringing students through the facility. It's just been obviously tough with the COVID restrictions and some of our staffing limitations here. But I'm hoping we can bring some more staff on soon and get back to those presentations because it's great to see, you know, that the kids really, you know, open their minds and enjoy what's going on here. And that they, they see some things that, you know, old timers like me miss. So it's really, it's cool to get them engaged. So as soon as we're back to that point, I will let you know.
Great. Thanks. Yeah, you know, I've been trying to bring my kids out there for two years and right as the time we got ready to do it, then COVID hits. I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to being able to get out there. Thank you so much. I think I'm going to open it up to the public just in case there are any public comments.
Yes, we do have one on Zoom. Mike Garabedian, please go ahead.
Good evening, council members. Mike Garabedian. I'm, I think there's a workshop coming up on odor. I wonder if you could introduce that topic and the general problem and the change of the buffer and what to expect at the workshop.
Sure. If it pleases the council, I'd be happy to answer that. So the Authority is tomorrow night holding a virtual workshop on odors particularly. It's something that we've done, I think this is our 11th or 12th annual event. And we initiated this a number of years ago really to improve communication and understanding with residents around us. Obviously, with a solid waste facility, odors are just a natural byproduct of this operation. We endeavor to reduce those odors, but so much of it is just an understanding and a communication with residents and fostering that dialogue and helping them understand that the Authority takes the issue seriously and what we've done to address that issue. So again, tomorrow night we'll be having an online meeting. I believe a link is on our website, wpwma.ca.gov. It suggests an RSVP, but you can just click on the link and attend. And I think tomorrow night we'll be talking about our Waste Action Plan, similar to what I presented this evening, but also some very concrete things that we've done recently to help reduce odors, including a site-wide odor plan that we implemented about six months ago that really codifies how we manage odors, how we manage operations, and requires that anybody that comes on site, contractors, consultants, adhere to that guideline. And it keeps us on a very singular unified path of making sure we minimize odors and minimize the impact to nearby neighbors.
Do we have any other?
No, I don't see any hands raised in the audience and no other hands are raised on Zoom.
I'll bring it back up here. I think that Councilmember Joyner wants to say something.
Yeah, just very quickly, Eric, I just wanted to follow up on Mr. Garabedian's comment, looking at the two layout plans. Are you still planning on taking composting across the street? And are you in any way considering enclosing those compost piles and trying to mitigate the odors that result from the aeration or the turning of those piles?
Yeah. So to answer your question, one of the options, Plan Concept 1, does envision moving all the organics operations across sediment to the west. But one of the provisions that we've identified, both in the Waste Action Plan and moving forward in the future, the next operating agreement, is that we'll phase out and cease open winrow operations of composting. And that's the one that we've been doing for 25-odd years where the material is laid out, you know, in the open air and turned in water periodically. And even though it's well-managed, it has a high potential for odors. So we're transitioning to what's called aerated static pile, where in many cases, those, the piles of material will not be regularly turned. They'll be aerated with using pipes and pumps to push air through the system or draw it through the system. And studies have noted that emissions, including odors, through ASP-type composting can reduce emissions by 90-plus percent. So once you reduce those emissions, you're reducing odors at the same time. And then some, both operators have also identified what's called covered aerated static pile. So it's a next level up where it has a membrane cover over the piles, which increases that mitigation of odors and emissions even better. We have laid out the potential for a building for initial processing of materials, but that will probably come a little bit later. We want to give this, the ASP and covered ASP a good run and see how well that works in reducing compost odors. And we're extremely confident in that that will make a significant difference in reduction of compost-related odors.
I agree with you. Covered ASP is the way to go.
Are we good? Thank you so much, Eric. Really appreciated all of your thorough answers and your really great presentation. Thank you. Appreciate being here.
Thank you so much for the time. I really appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Also. All right, we'll move along to item seven, public comment. Do we have any non-agendaist public comment, Miss Skinner?
I do see a hand raised on Zoom, Mr. Garabedian. Looks like he lowered his hand, so I don't see any other hands. I do, Mr. Chapman, please come up to the podium.
And Mayor, if I just may remind speakers that are present, we do have microphone covers on the microphones. And so we would ask that when the speaker has concluded speaking, they remove the cover and dispose of it themselves.
Thank you.
Do you hear me? Excellent.
We can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council members and city staff. Two items to discuss this evening. One, in approximately, if my records are correct, in 2019, one of the council meetings, the then Mayor Carl Skent and the previous city manager had shared some good news with the city. They had been working with Placerville County and on receiving more tax revenue from, I believe it was from property taxes each year in order to fund and help fund the police and the fire departments. If that's true, my question is, did the county have an extra pot of money hanging around, which most of us don't, in order to give the City of Lincoln a sweetheart deal? Or did the City of Lincoln have something to offset that in order to show the county that, in fact, you know, generosity for working with us? If so, I'd like to find out what those concessions were at that time. The second item that I have, kind of short and sweet. Mayor, back on the September 28 meeting, during the time in which the consent calendar items were purled and completed, and I'm paraphrasing here, you had said, "As a standard public service announcement regarding items on the consent calendar, we, being the council, are very happy to answer any questions or concerns on those items. However, if you contact city staff before the council meetings, you would certainly get a one-on-one response and answer instead of having any confusion about what does that mean? How does that work at the council meetings? I don't know if you've even considered what that is or why other mayors have not made that public announcement. Part of the reason is, I think, most of them realize that most of us, in fact, do know how to contact city staff. We do know how to dial the phone and make the contacts. But what they know more than anything else is it's usually more than just one of us having an interest in any particular item. I've found over the years that for every one person that asks a question about a particular item, there oftentimes is 10, 20, it could be even larger than that. So a lot of us look at that and use those questions that others may have, if we don't have questions, in a way in which that allows us to look at something and gather information as well, therefore spreading the information quicker. So that's pretty much the reason for it. And again, one of the things, though, that I've heard from more people in these discussions than anything else, and I'm certainly sure that it hasn't been meant on purpose, is that pretty near all the people that I've talked to have said that when you make that comment, it sounds like you're asking and looking at us as these things being trivial.
Time's up.
And they're not. So what we would like you to do is maybe rethink what it is you're doing for your public notices.
Do we have any further comments?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Garabedian's hand did go back up. Mr. Garabedian, please go ahead.
Hi. Thank you. Good evening again. Want to talk about the oak tree work on Moore, on the south side of Moore that I observed yesterday. I'm quite concerned about two aspects of it. When you were looking at this, passing this ordinance or this action, this resolution, I suggested that the 20-foot was too high. It should be a maximum and not a practice for limbing. The living removal that's going on is, in my opinion, rather severe. I have some experience, trained in forestry, and could damage the trees. We are at the end, near the end of the summer dormancy period for oaks, some kinds of oaks. And this may be cutting it a bit close. So that's the first issue I noticed and concerned about. They've cleaned up that area. The second point is that the workers have been parking their cars, their pickups, all around the area, using it as kind of a parking lot instead of having a staging area where they are sure to avoid compacting the soil, another potential threat to the trees. So it just continues my concern about the city's poor management of its trees. And I don't know what the answer is to get some just moderately necessary improvement about how you, in this case, are trimming them, limbing them, but also cutting them down and have with very little sense of the, what's being affected. The natural areas the city seems to view as something to destroy and wipe out as opposed to treasure and maintain. That's it.
Thank you. No other hands are raised, Mayor.
All right, we will close public comment and go on to item eight, the consent agenda. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council or resident requests a specific item be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Any items removed will be considered after the remainder of the consent agenda. Do any of my colleagues wish to remove an item?
No.
Seeing none. Did we have any requests from the public?
I do see a hand raised. Which item, Mr. Chapman? And I do have a hand raised on Zoom, Mr. Garabedian. Which item?
Thank you, Mike Garabedian. Two items, item E and a question about item I. Eight, I, E and I. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
A motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Well, took it.
Okay.
I have a roll call.
Yes, Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
Councilmember Lortzen.
Yes.
Councilmember Andriata.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skent.
Yes.
And Mayor Silhaj.
All right, we'll go to eight, C, Adopt Proclamation 2021-07, honoring the friends of the Lincoln Public Library for 35 years of service. Is Ms. Hunt on?
Yes, she is on Zoom.
I wanted to pull this one also just to give recognition, so I appreciate that. And let's go to Ms. Hunt first, maybe just to...
Absolutely. Good evening, council members of the public. I apologize for not having my camera on. I am having a few small camera issues today, but I hope you can all hear me. So this is a proclamation that is recognizing the Friends of the Lincoln Library, which is a nonprofit that exists to support and promote the Lincoln Public Library. They are celebrating 35 years of being an incorporated nonprofit. Over the course of those 35 years, they have continuously supported the library, allowing us to provide superior service to our community. They provide a substantial amount of fiscal support for the library, both in donation and in-kind, as well as providing a committed volunteer corps. And they also do a great deal of work promoting the library and its services to the community, making sure that Lincoln and its residents know what is available through the Lincoln Public Library. So we are quite excited with 35 years of a very fruitful partnership and looking forward to many decades in the future of working closely with them.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
Madam Mayor, the only reason that I had that item pulled is I felt that it was very important that everyone should have the opportunity to know about this particular subject and option. It is an amazing goal of that timeframe. It's a job well done. Many cities, I don't think, can even hold a candle to that. And I did not want it to just go sliding by on the consent calendar without everybody having an opportunity to recognize and know that that exists. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I was going to pull that also for the same reasons.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move then. I move to adopt. Okay, I move to adopt proclamation 2021-7, honoring the Friends of the Lincoln Public Library for 35 years of service.
Thank you. Councilmember Lortzen.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skent.
Yes.
Councilmember Andriata.
Yes.
Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
And Mayor Silhaj.
All right, we'll move to eight, E, Adopt Resolution 2021-196. This has to do with offers of dedication from Lewis Land developers and the Independence at Lincoln Project. Let's get the question first and then we'll see how to answer it. It's Mr. Garabedian, right?
Yes, Mr. Garabedian, please go ahead with your question.
Hi, Mike Garabedian, Shelbach Drive. My question is about the items E. Well, exactly, it's item 1E, 2, and 3A and B. The general question, but if there are specifics, has to do with how these, what our plans are to manage these lands and what the efficient way is to learn about that process and review the biological management of these lands.
Thank you. Mr. Placer, do you want to take it or do you want to pick it up?
Well, I can have Lindy answer the questions regarding the purpose of the easements. You know, basically, the purpose of easement is to accept backbone infrastructure so that we can provide the utilities and services to the residents that are under construction and accept the offers of dedication for the open space areas, trail system and parkland, which would be managed by the conditions of a project approval, the Parks Master Plan as part of the Independence General Development Plan and the Independence DIR and its mitigation and monitoring report. I, all available online and at the second floor of the City Hall at Community Development. If there, if any interested party would want to preview them or review or obtain copies of. So but if, yeah, but if it's more into why are we having a public utility easement in this location, I would defer to my engineering manager.
Do we have any other?
No other hands are raised, Mayor.
As far as... As far as the process goes, the process for the determination of all these things is done back at the planning for the development, a development agreement, drainage plan, all of that is done far earlier than our getting the dedication.
Yes, this one, I would say this one kind of threw us a curve. When this project was brought forward in 2015, 2016, the way that Lewis Land Development brought the project forward with its multiple phases and backbone infrastructure in two separate phases created an issue with the final map recordation and having a map recorded on phase one and having a map recorded on phase two and not having the easements necessary to cross those lines. This is just, I wouldn't say fixing a problem, but resolving an outstanding issue so that we can, as a city, provide those utility services that are already constructed at the site.
Do I have a motion?
I, I will make the motion, but, but I want to point out Mr. Garabedian's earlier comments about the city just wanting to destroy open space. We're the only city I know of. It requires 40% open space in all new development. And in this particular project, what is the percentage of, of open space and wetlands that is being preserved? It's beyond 40%.
Yes.
Significantly beyond 40%.
Yeah, there, there's a neapot area that is completely undeveloped on the southeast corner of about 40 acres. This was about a 200-acre site. So, and then Mark Marveen's being preserved with a trail system outside the protected zone. And more than, even with the additional units that were approved by council at the last meeting, we exceed the park requirement for this development, for this 589 units. We're, I believe, about three acres overparked right now. So significantly more than even we would require in our, our new growth areas.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve the item.
Second.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Joyner. Councilmember Andriata.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skent. Carl Skent.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrenceon.
Yes.
And Mayor Silhaj.
Echo is real.
Carl's getting too long.
Are you? It's making it hard for you tonight. We'll try and work on it. All right. And then I had AI also as pulled, adopt resolution 2021-200 approving the reclassification of two positions in the Public Works Department from maintenance worker twos to water technician ones. Let's get the question.
Yes. Mr. Garabedian, please go ahead.
Hi again. Thank you for the stability to ask questions. That's great to have answers. The only question I have about this is where are the water technician positions? Are they in the sewer plant operation? Actually, that's the extent of my question. Thank you.
Yeah.
Great. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Hopefully you can hear me. To answer the question real quick, those, these two particular positions are in the Streets Division. The Streets Division actually takes care of our infrastructure when it comes to water leaks and any type of issues that are underground.
Thank you. Any other comment?
No other hands are raised, Mayor.
Any comment from council? Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
Councilmember Andriata.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skent.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrenceon.
Yes.
And Mayor Silhaj.
Yes. All right. We do not have any public hearings items before us tonight, so we'll go on to general business. We have 10A. I believe that Councilmember Joyner is recusing himself on 10A.
I am, indeed. Thank you for the reminder.
You're welcome.
How about I leave it here? Go to the bathroom.
Actually, I'm required to give a reason.
You have to say why.
And, and, and the reason is that this property is within 400 feet of property my family owns. And while I don't honestly think I need to recuse myself from this, it may be the first domino in future actions that I would recuse myself from. So I'm just going to go ahead and start right up front.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, we'll wait for you to exit the room, and then someone will text him. All right, so 10A, adopt successor agency resolution 2021-02S approving the attached resolution declaring the real property owned by the successor agency located at the southwest intersection of Joyner Parkway and First Street. And this is identified as successor parcel number 021321083000 as surplus land and not necessary for the city's use. Finding that such declaration is exempt from environmental review under the CEQA Act and taking related actions. And I believe that this is also Mr. Bermudas, who's going to be giving the staff report.
Yes, good evening again, Mayor Silhaj, council members. This particular action is a successor agency action tonight as well, just to recall that. And so when we make the action, it'll have to be done via the successor agency. I think the, the, this item is, in, in traditional sense, is pretty traditional. And, and, you know, one of these things, over the years, all cities do have to bring up a resolution for surplus land. And what kind of changes the game is, as noted in the staff report, is recent Assembly Bill 1486 that basically now puts a few more layers into the action and the decision-making of the council. And what that means is this parcel, as identified by you, is in Joyner Parkway and First Street, was previously a redevelopment property. And through the dissolution of redevelopment, it moved through, you know, its channels to end up on the long-range property management plan, and that management plan was approved by the Department of Finance. So here we are today and having to do a little bit more formality with this, this particular property because we do intend to dispose or sell the property in the future. And so what I brought to the council's attention is just the mere fact that with this new law that has kicked in, we have to take a couple of other steps before we actually move forward with potentially a private developer. And what that means is we need to, one, flag it as a surplus property, which is pretty normal of what we traditionally do and we've done in the past with other property. But in this case, once it's deemed surplus, city staff will have to notify Housing Community Development and inform them via their website and our contacts there that there is this surplus property for sale or for disposition by the city. And then at that time, they actually have a list of potential developers that may have some interest in this property. And these developers actually would be affordable housing type of developers. And when we do that, they will have 60 days to come forward to the city if they view that this property is viable and want to purchase the property or start negotiations with the city. At that point, the city has 90 days to negotiate and a good fair standing with these particular, with this particular entity. And if we can't come to reasonable terms, then the property then reverts into a typical traditional sale with anybody in the private development world. It should be noted as well is that with the sale or with the disposition of the property, we will have to, when eventually likely not see profits from the property, but there are enforceable obligations against a property that we will have to provide funding to those taxing entities. So that would be another part of the process. Lastly, another fact that will happen through this process after this approval will be that we will have to notice the property and make it known to school districts or any agency that may view an opportunity to do something with this particular site. And there's some timeframes on, on that noticing that we will have to adhere to as well. And then, once we complete all this, then, as I mentioned, the property, then, if it either is going to go down a path of some type of affordable housing, we will go down that direction, or it will go to the private sector type of development for any varying type of commercial use that is similar and consistent with the current zoning. So tonight, we, I'm just, you know, deeming the property that it is suitable for agency development. And we view this as a surplus property, and that'd be the action that we would, staff would recommend the council make tonight. With that, I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. We'll go one by one. And let's start with Dan. Does he have a question?
What's the current zoning on this parcel?
It's commercial.
So it's after we rezone?
No. Well, apart, apartments are permitted use in the commercial zone.
What'd you say?
Traditionally permitted.
Yeah. Is that it? Councilman Carl Skent, do you have anything?
I don't have any questions.
Have no questions.
Yeah, so don't. Do I have a motion? Oh, sorry, I skipped public comment. Can we go to public comment?
Yes, Mayor. So I don't see any hands raised on Zoom, and I don't see, oh, okay.
Mr. Chapman would like to.
Mr. Chapman. Yes, please come to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor Byron Chapman. Just a couple of quick questions, and I may have missed this. The approximate size of the lot of, of the piece of property? And would this be a, a property that I know that the city is somewhat behind in the low-income housing and that sort of thing? Is this something that the city could look at as a possible venture with a developer or something along that way in order to make that happen? Thank you.
Do we have any other?
No other.
Do we have anyone who could address that question?
Yeah. The acreage is 1.4 acres. And regards to affordable housing opportunity, again, if there is interest in this as an affordable type of housing product on the site, that would come out within the 60 days that it'd be noticed with Housing Community Development. I just add to that, Mayor Silhaj, that, that's the purpose of the, of that Assembly Bill, is to provide public notice of surplus land to those who, who desire to find land for affordable housing projects. And, well, twofold, affordable housing projects and public school sites.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we adopt resolution or successor agency resolution 2021-02S. Do I have to read the whole thing, or did you already?
I read the whole thing in the beginning.
I don't think you did.
No, it's fine. Yeah. Do I have a second?
No second.
Can I get a roll call?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Andriata.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrenceon.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skent.
Hey.
And Mayor Silhaj.
Yes. All right, can we text Paul that he can come back? We'll wait for him before you go on. All right, we'll move along to item 10B, a discussion in possible direction. Possible adoption of a minor conditional use permit designation for businesses seeking to obtain an ABC beer and wine license where alcohol sales represent a minor ancillary sales component, and Mr. Scott will be giving our staff.
Thank you, Mayor. This particular item's on here, as it says, for discussion in possible direction. But it's one of those types of items that I'll occasionally move forward as a city manager to get a reading from a city council as to your interest in the topic before we spend a lot of staff time working on something that we bring forward and find out the council's not interested in. So we had received some complaints recently about the cost of our conditional use permit, especially as it relates to small businesses. And this particular topic is on here to address whether or not there's an alternate method of, of trying to accomplish the same goals. Conditional use permits, or CUPs, as we government people like to call them, are done by cities to, to condition approvals usually on land entitlements or certain types of business uses. Most cities use the CUP process when they address alcohol permits. So alcoholic beverage control, the state entity that issues alcohol permits, licenses, when they come forward in a city, most cities will attach to that a conditional use permit requirement. So we have that same condition here. Last year, the city studied the cost of our conditional use permit along with the cost of all of our other fees in our master fee schedule. And it was discovered through that analysis, not surprisingly, the conditional use permit actually costs considerably more than what the city has been charging for them. Anytime you address a major increase in a fee, you're bound to discover afterwards that there's going to be people who, when they find out about that increase, don't like it. So it's not surprising and certainly appropriate for people to question us on that. So when one of our businesses recently came in looking to, to get a conditional use permit for a small retail operation where he wanted to sell, or wanted to have a beer and wine permit from ABC, he was surprised to find out that the conditional use permit cost for an existing building was $3,500, to deposit $3,500, and felt that that was, that was too much for something that was going to be a very minor part of his overall business use. I was asked by council members, I was asked by, by he and other people from the public, why is it that a city would need to charge that much for something that would be that small a part of the person's business? So when a city faces a situation where they're looking at fees, in particular a fee like the CUPs where the council was faced not long ago with the, the reality that the actual cost of providing that service was higher than what our fee used to be, the city council has three options. You can either choose to set the fee at the cost that the study justifies, or you can set the fee lower, essentially subsidizing the operation. And when I say that, I think it's important for people to understand that a subsidy on a fee basically means the public is going to pay the difference. So if, if the city is spending $3,000 to do a CUP and the city chooses to only charge $1,000, then the public is, is subsidizing the difference. Sometimes cities choose to subsidize because they believe that the lower fee is justified for some public purpose. Very common, happens all the time in cities everywhere. For instance, public recreation programs are often subsidized, the cost of, of classes at recreation centers, youth programs, senior programs, childcare programs, parenting classes. It's not common at all that a city council will say there's a public purpose to be served here by charging less than the full fee, and in those cases, the fee's subsidized. So first, you have the ability to set the fee at the cost the study justifies. Secondly, you have the ability, if you can make the findings, to subsidize the fee. The third thing a city council can do is change the process so that the fee doesn't cost as much because you're not doing as much scrutiny in, prior to the issuance of the fee. And I always think that that's the one that at least deserves some attention. Maybe it is or isn't a good idea, but at least it deserves some attention. So in this particular case, we had a, had a request to reduce our fee for a retail business that would operate its normal business, and that would be the bulk of the revenue that this business would, would incur, and also wanted to have beer and wine. This particular case is sports card shop, but other places that you've seen this happen are hairdressers, spas, where people want to just sell wine and wine or beer, probably more wine, to customers as part of the service that they provide. But it's not a very big part of the business operation. And sometimes they would be operating a kind of business that would be far from a bar or a restaurant with late-night service, not likely to disturb a neighborhood. So sometimes cities will adopt something I referred to as minor CUP. I've seen other names attached to it. That would say, okay, in a condition where the applicant is going to provide beer and wine, but it represents less than 10% of their overall revenue, or maybe it's 5% or whatever percent the council would choose to assign to it. And maybe it would say the hours of operation of that business must stop by certain hour of the evening, whether it's 8:00, 9:00, 10:00. It's certainly not midnight or 2:00 a.m. And thirdly, and obviously would have to be located a certain distance from any residential property. And maybe the council would have other conditions that would, would be desirable to place on that. And perhaps a permit of that sort doesn't require the same kind of public process that a regular CP would require. Perhaps it could be approved by the city manager or the city managers designate instead of doing the whole blown, full-blown process. So that would allow the city to keep the cost of the operation down and hopefully, in that case, accommodate other businesses. Now, that, that's, those are the positives associated with this. There's always another side of the coin, and, and I don't want to suggest that there aren't some other potential. potential impacts from adopting something like this, and the council might want to study that some more. For instance, if we decided that it was okay for hair salons or nail salons, spas, and sports card shops to have minor CUPs, as long as they met the same conditions, it might be allowable for any other use in the city to also qualify for the same consideration. We shouldn't, we can't discriminate between different kinds of businesses in saying, well, this kind of business, we think it's okay, but that kind, we don't. So if they're willing to close at eight o'clock, if they're willing to certify that it's under a certain percentage of the total sales, then we may end up allowing beer and wine sales at some other business that otherwise might not be considered desirable by other people. So those are the, those are kind of the ups and downs. If we were to do this, it would require a changed our ordinance. That takes work, that takes time. And it's always noteworthy that the city manager who doesn't have to do that work brings forward the item. So I'm acknowledging that I'm doing this when I have other staff that probably have plenty of city council priorities they want to work on. And this, so I think you have to make a judgment. Is this issue big enough to require that kind of commitment of time? It's hard for me to pass up any small business that has what sounds to me like a legitimate purpose without at least putting the table, putting the item on the table and allowing a discussion. So that's what I've done tonight. Long report, I'm sorry for that, but it was a short meeting.
It was perfect.
So thank you very much.
Thank you. So we'll just go and order Councilwoman Andriata.
I do. I thank you for bringing this up because, as you know, we've all got these questions. I did have one question about, so I did have somebody contact me several months ago, and it wasn't about beer and wine, but he gives guitar lessons and he wants to do it in, he's got his home and there's like a little studio next to it. And he was told that he needed a conditional use permit and it was like $3,000. That's not something he can afford. Would that be the same type of thing? Or are we just talking about just beer and wine or ABC license? Is that the same coverage or is it different altogether?
Well, I think both city attorney and community development director may be better suited to answer this almost always, probably better suited to answer. But the, yeah, there are other types of CUPs that could also be discussed as using other changes. Some cities call them minor accommodations. And they decide that certain uses, certain property uses might be appropriately approved without the full-blown CUP process. And that is done. The trick there is always to set the conditions under which you allow that. Because if it's not clear, then you have people for everything coming in and asking to make it a minor accommodation. But, but yes, that is done and it can be discussed. It's not what I was bringing up here.
Right. No, I know what you were talking about specifically, but I remember that case that came up and he qualifies as a small business or whatever. I just didn't know if it was the same. But thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, that's it.
Anything else?
A few thoughts. If one would need to find a public purpose in this type of accommodation, it would be hard to find.
You don't find it though.
What's that?
You don't need to find a public purpose.
I agree, but it was mentioned. It would be hard for me to.
If we're going to subsidize it, we would have to find it. But if we're just going to create a different streamlined process, then that's not subsidizing, that's just eliminating the cost.
We could potentially be subsidizing as well, but.
We don't want to do that, right? We're talking like dollar for dollar, eliminating the cost, streamlining the process so that it just costs less.
There's two fronts here, and I would look at it carefully.
Why don't we, we're in the dialogue now?
No.
Well, no, I say if we were starting down that path, we ought to get the public comments and then.
Yeah.
We're at the council comments and questions.
Yeah.
Questions.
Did you have other questions?
Yes, I do. So just as comments and possible direction for you, I think a change in process is probably worth exploring. Obviously, let's check with our neighbors. They're already doing all of these and see what their process is and whether they are indeed subsidizing or they've come up with some different accommodation for that with respect to the 100 feet residential property. That's going to become intriguing if we.
I didn't mean to say it should be 100. Did I say that?
Yes.
I didn't mean to say 100 feet. I meant to say X feet. In other words, whatever amount the council said.
Yeah.
Okay.
You were saying we could set the parameters. We could decide what we want it to be.
Well, the point that I'm trying to get to is this, and it's that as we come along with mixed-use properties, residential over the top of an existing business, now you've got no separation other than vertical. And so you could create a situation in which you would otherwise make this type of accommodation, but because of that restriction.
Yeah, I would, if, I don't know if we have a mixed-use ordinance at this point. I would want to make sure that it was understood in the mixed-use ordinance that the people downstairs might be selling alcohol.
Okay. And then my last thought was simply that maybe we can, as we explore this farther, if it makes any sense at all, that we create a pilot program, see how that goes, and then expand it.
That's it.
Councilwoman Andriata?
No, I already.
Oh, you already did. Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Councilwoman Carlsson, did you want to reserve your comments for after public comment? Or do you have questions?
Yeah.
You want to reserve it for after? All right, Councilwoman Lauritsen?
I have a question. What goes into that $3,000, you know, for the CUP fee? I mean, you said it costs money.
Time.
It's a staff time or?
There's considerable staff time. There's public noticing costs. There's planning commission, if it goes to planning commission. And I believe they do right now go to planning commission and then potentially even to a city council. And so there's considerable amount of time that's put into something like this, answering questions from the public, you know, just.
So my question is, would we be able to reasonably eliminate some of those costs, circumvent maybe, I don't know, the planning, whatever, whatever is necessary to reduce the cost enough to make this staff drill worth it?
Make what worth it?
Putting staff through it, putting it on the agenda, taking time for the discussion. Would we be able to reasonably protect the public's interests while also creating a streamlined process that reduces the fee enough that it's worth it? Like, right, if I'm the business owner and it's like, oh, cool, it was 3,000 and now it's 2,500, didn't do much.
No, I think certainly if that was all you were going to accomplish, it wouldn't be worth the time to do it. I think unless you could end up with something that costs only half as much.
And you think we could?
I think you could. I think you could justify that. And I don't think you'd find that these happen every day.
Yeah. We would be able to put reasonable parameters where we would have fairly confidence that it would be not abused mostly.
That's correct.
Yeah. So I'm just curious if it was approved administratively, perhaps you or the city attorney, then what would be the mechanism for pulling that conditional use permit back when they weren't appropriately?
They'd have to renew it. It'd be the same thing.
Set up an administrative hearing with the party that issued it.
Okay. And would that be a public meeting in that case?
Um, you know, it's interesting. They're, they're public, yes. They're, they're often not widely publicized meetings, but they're, they're public. Depends on the city how much you publicize.
Maybe there's a way on the back end of this to say, if you take actions that trigger this, you will incur the costs of that process?
I would think you could.
Could you want to require an annual renewal for? That's what I was going to ask. Can we have like a very small renewal fee so at least pops back up?
Not small. And it should be.
An appropriate.
You know, I don't understand.
You don't want to charge them the same thing every year.
Well, yeah, couldn't it be?
But you have to renew it every year. And every year, it can be looked at based on compliance and not renewed.
Well, CUPs do not require an annual renewal.
That's what I was going to say.
But they are subject to.
Review. Yeah. So we could, we could fold the same parameters in so that we're not charging the business the same, but that if there's anything that is a triggering event, that it would trigger review and revocation of that lesser CUP.
So that's, you know, Dan and I both, on our planning commission, we've had to pull a few of those permits. So I'm just wondering what the process would be.
It would apply to the lesser also. Yeah. Okay. Are we good? Want to go to public comment and then come back?
Yeah.
Let's do that. Do we have any public comments?
Mayor, I don't have any hands raised on Zoom. Anybody in the public? No, I don't see. I'm sorry, Mr. Pearl. Please go ahead.
Too boring.
Richard, can you omit yourself?
There we go. Thank you. Mayor and Council, Richard Pearl, Lincoln, California. I spent my career talking and working with local governments in documenting the costs of services. And I know that it, it's a lot of money for individuals to bear, but there's a lot of information why it does cost this much. I think that there is an accommodation, as the city manager has recommended and talked about, that there are things that you can come through and make it worthwhile to have both the public protected and also to have businesses continue with what they need to do.
Thank you. No other.
We'll bring it back up and then we'll start with Dan because I think you've been waiting.
Well, no, I just, one of the options with subsidizing, I think it was this council, I know it's certainly been the prior council. In this council, we are not in a position to subsidize anyone. And so I don't think that's a nonstarter. And for, we don't subsidize park and rec. They're paid or we don't do it. They pay for themselves. I got to looking at the, our fee list. You know, I've looked at it when we approved it, but not all the way down. And there are real discrepancies on licenses or CUPs, which are kind of a license. And there's a lot of reasons for having a CUP. And they're all the same price, minimum. That, that seems really strange to me. You certainly could do ministerial CUPs at a lot less money. And that would seem to be the way to go. I also, however, have been in facilities that, you get your haircut, you may have a glass of wine, if I ever had anybody do my nails, places like that. They don't sell that wine.
I like the way you did that, by the way.
They don't sell that wine. This is going to be a part of this man's business plan. And there are other businesses that, remember the candy, the chocolate place?
Alcohol in the candies.
Bourbon in the candy. And we went through, I don't remember how that was. Where we get an ABC pit permit to put bourbon in the candy. I am, two things, I'm very much in favor, depending on the amount of staff time. That would be really your call of coming up with an accommodation. And maybe look beyond just the alcohol that we can build into an ordinance that becomes ministerial. Then all we'd have to do is change the pricing to be 3,000. The minimum is 250 or whatever the dollars are. So I also would like to see the work sheets that we use to generate our cost of our processes because it sounds like we may, we certainly can't do it with our existing staff. Whenever we get some staff, we ought to look at the extra work our staff has to do to do things, which is maybe a reason we don't, our staff is really overworked. We don't have enough and they've got to do too many things to get their job done. But I, there are some logical disconnects. Or maybe we just have the, each of the, I don't know, I guess it's each of the departments that did the studies of the process cost to make a presentation of a workshop sometime to explain why they are costless as they are.
Yeah.
Because they don't charge, it's not a project accounting system, so.
Right. I think there's, there's a lot there in what you just said. And I think that's, that's the, that's the one thing that makes doing legislation this way uncomfortable because to do this all the way, in other words, to look not just at the beer and wine CUP requirement, but to broaden it to be an evaluation of why are our costs the way they are? What are the, you know, how do we come up with the, you know, the study, they can give you the actual data that the consultant did to figure out the cost. But as you do that, you could go down virtually every, every fee we charge and dig into that and do that kind of analysis, which is really going to be real tough for the staff to do anytime soon. So unless there's a way of carving something out that makes a difference, then it's probably going to be something that has to go on a long-term work plan and not something we can do in a hurry.
My commercial was not the due process analysis. We don't, that's not in the near future.
Right.
What is in the near future is the right accounting system.
Oh, yeah.
That makes that easy, which we don't have. So that's my tickle to you was that we need, we have the new accounting system, that kind of data being free, just as a matter of the accounting system.
And as you know, that RFP is getting ready to go out, about an 18-month process to implement it once the contract's issued. So, but it, absolutely agree, that is a high, high priority. And whether or not this justifies distracting staff in the meantime, it's, it's hard to tell one business owner who has a good argument that we can't be accommodating. But sometimes unfortunately, that's the way it works with, when you're a government of laws.
And just as a clarifying point, the fees that are listed with respect to CUPs, that's actually a deposit. And so it, the business owner is charged ultimately for the actual time that staff applies to the project. So for example, if you're a business that's required to put down a $10,000 deposit for a CUP, you go all the way to planning commission. Planning commission denies it. You have to go to city council on an appeal. Depending on how that works out in front of city council, that applicant will receive an invoice for the additional time and cost that was required. So it's not $10,000, $3,500. Those aren't flat fees. That's a deposit. And they might get money back. They might have to pay more depending on what's necessary to process.
What does the minimum, we put the, those numbers.
27.
2650.
That is the, upon, that is the average cost of a CUP. So it's the minimum that an applicant's charged for a CUP. Traditionally. The traditionally, CUP applications, notwithstanding the one that we're talking about, cost more than the $3,500 deposit.
Really? Yeah. I mean, they, fees get set as an average.
I'm going to bring it back here because we haven't finished.
Yes.
Oh, did you have questions? You didn't get a turn.
No, if we can come up with some kind of, you know, alternative for, you know, a fee for like a small operation, like, you know, someone serving beer and wine, you know, with limited hours, you know, it'd be great. So, you know, come up with something that's a little bit less costly. That's, that's basically, that's basically it. That was my interest in the whole thing.
I would like to see if we could figure out a way that's not very staff intensive to focus just on this type of solution and then fold in a larger scale view of how do we streamline it, if that's appropriate at some future date. I think that there's something actionable that we should be able to like settle on with not very much. I know it's extra staff time and I'm sorry, Christine.
No, there's.
But I don't think it should be super burdensome.
The only outstanding question I have is that there have been some new regulations recently that I'm going to have to take a deeper dive into because it is very likely in my mind that no matter what we do, if it's involving a CUP with beer and wine, it has to require a public process.
Okay. Maybe we could streamline.
A public hearing.
But maybe we could streamline all the other components.
Yes.
Some cities don't have any permit requirement at all.
Yeah. So.
If you have $50,000 to have a public hearing.
What are you looking for from us?
Just whether or not you wanted staff to take the next step, which would be to look into what it would take to put an ordinance together to bring it back.
I would. I think that that business model is actually a very cool thing for Lincoln. I think it could, I think it'd be unfortunate if we didn't try to see how we could make it more flexible. And I think that it, it probably would be a benefit to other types of businesses moving forward.
I, I would suggest that we assign it to the staff and this is the primary staff here.
Here we are.
And let them, let them take an independent look at it and come back and tell us if this is something that they think that we can put together reasonably. And if it's got other bigger problems, then we need to hear that.
Yeah.
And, and I'm all for getting that input first.
That sounds great to me. Does that work for everyone?
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much for bringing that forward. I really appreciated that. All right. That concludes our general business. So we are moving along to item 11, council initiated business. Councilor Underata, do you have any?
I don't have any outside business, but I would, I would like to request that either you, mayor, or you have Mr. Scott or somebody respond to Mr. Chapman's question or comments about the tax sharing work that we did with the county and explain to him that it wasn't a sweetheart deal, that it was basically just getting back our money. And so I wanted to ask that somebody to please.
Giving up our money in the first place.
Yes, exactly.
Mr. Scott, can you try and follow up with Mr. Chapman? And this is one of those times when it's very helpful to be able to talk offline with staff, which was the intent of all of my comments prior. And so, Councilor Underata.
One really quick, and it just kind of came out of the blue for me today. I got a, a request from someone that lives over in the 12 Bridges area who is discovering that in the absence of a dog park in that area of the city, the playgrounds, the school grounds and playing fields are being used. So I'm just wondering if there's any interest in kicking something over to the Parks and Rec committee to take a look at whether it's feasible or not to come up with a project, perhaps in an existing park that might provide some type of dog park over in that area.
I will note that that seems to be an escalated problem in all our parks. I received many comments and complaints lately about that happening at Joyner Park or at several other ones also. So it might not be symptomatic of there not being a dog park there. It might just be symptomatic of a lot of people are at home and are becoming more lazy about cleaning up after their animals.
And it could be. It could be, but geographically I see.
For years, this is the most I've ever gotten on that particular complaint and I've gotten quite a lot of pictures.
Me too.
But I wouldn't, I'd be amenable to kicking it over. I don't, we can bring that up at some point. Like, um, Councilor Crosskin?
I have nothing.
Councilor Lawrence?
I have nothing.
All right. I also have no initiated business until we'll move to information items and we'll start with Councilor Underata.
I have none.
None.
And the only information item I might add is that the majority of council will be going out on the Placer Business Alliance trip to DC next week and we will be meeting with all of the other electeds from the region and from business leaders and with members of Congress. And regulatory agencies, I can't remember the agenda.
I don't recall any.
But the, the discussion items that are to be brought forward there should be elucidating and helpful. And we fly out Tuesday and come back Friday and we'll report out on that trip at our next council meeting.
And there may even be a possibility, I had a briefing in advance, I'm going to be sitting on one of the panels where I was asked if I was comfortable with that panel being pushed out into social media. So there may be
Awesome.
an opportunity. Yeah. To see that.
The Placer County Transportation Agency. I'm totally speaking in acronyms. I hate it when people do that.
So, so no, actually the panel that, that I'll be sitting on, I'll be wearing the Sparta hat.
Can you explain what that is?
So the South Placer Regional Transit Association. I'll be wearing that hat primarily, but we'll be discussing the Placer.
Sit on that committee for those who might.
I do, I do. So what the multiple panels in this case will be discussing is the benefits of the PCCP, the Placer County Conservation Plan, which is a habitat conservation plan.
A lot of initialisms.
What are the benefits of that or what is the, the, how is that needed for different agencies and for Sparta in particular? It all goes, comes down to financing of widening Highway 65, the interchange at 65 and 80 and eventually Placer Parkway. So.
Perfect. Thank you. Did you have anything? All right. And so with that, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. So I do need to say.